The Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission Meeting of September 24, 2025 is now called to order. I will now call the roll. Commissioners, please state here when your name is called. Commissioner Burnett?
Here.
Commissioner Rasby?
Here.
Commissioner Barnett?
Here.
Commissioner Stumpf?
Here.
And Commissioner Sordi?
Here.
And I am here as well. Please note for the record that Vice Chair Birch is absent. And please stand if you are able as I lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As the Planning Commission conducts the meeting this evening, we encourage active participation by the public, which is essential to the work of the commission. The public can participate in several ways. Prior to a meeting, written comments about agenda items may be submitted to staff. During the meeting, there are two opportunities for members of the public to participate. First, during the verbal communications period, an individual may speak on any topic that is not on the agenda. Second, during the public hearing portion of tonight's meeting, any member of the public may speak about an agenda item. You will be advised of the times when you to speak on each of these items. If you wish to address the commission tonight during the verbal communications portion or a public hearing agenda item, please raise your hand on Zoom or for those here in person, complete a speaker card and give it to a staff member. We will now begin the verbal communications portion of the meeting, during which members of the public are invited to address the commission on any issue that is not on the agenda for tonight's meeting. Staff will announce when your three-minute time limit is up. So I do have one member of the public here, Gus. If you could come up, you will just speak, please state your name. As you know, speak into the microphone and because the meeting is being recorded, and you will have three minutes.
Like I say, I like to start out with a sense of humor. So Horton stopped splashing. He looked towards the sound. "That's funny," thought Horton. There's no one around. Then he heard it again, just a very faint yelp, as if some tiny person were calling for help. "I'll help you," said Horton. "But who are you? Where?" He looked, and he looked, and he could not see nothing there but a small speck of dust blowing past through the air. Picture of Rob Moore sent me. Okay. World Cup. This is basically on what I sent you on CBS News. I hope that you could have seen the three-minute clip on that. If you didn't, it's coming. No matter what is to happen, I've tried to, you know, the Brazilian team back then. So I went to a bunch of games back then and, you know, I went to the parties after because it was word of mouth and it just got bigger and bigger and bigger. And it's, no matter what you guys are plant, you're not planning anything. I'm just warning you, it's just, it's going to happen, no matter with your, with your say or without your say. And what I'm trying to say is that I hope that you would look at the clip because they'll repeat it and stuff like that on CBS when that happens. I also give you this little card, and I would like the town to have some sort of remembrance or public service on July 2nd because this guy Escobar, he played during that World Cup and he was shot in Colombia because he kicked an own goal against the United States, and he died. And we, it would be proper for us because we hosted the Brazilian national team. And if you investigate that, the last game is on July 1st. That's on a, you know, Wednesday, July 2nd is a Thursday. I believe that the big giant party was on July 4th. You're, I believe the major road that the party was on last time will be things. And as host town that won, that we hosted the country of Brazil, I believe it's best interest of the town to do something on, you know, like just hold the memorial at sunset and just have you guys say, hey, town, you know, just silence for, because somebody shouldn't get shot for, you know, kicking an own goal and dying. And it would be great for the town to, you know, and people to just, hey, everybody that heard about this, because it'll be right after the final game, that if you put it out there and, you know, say, hey, we think that it's a proper fitting for the end of the World Cup because we won't get that World Cup anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any, before you sit down, Gus, are there any questions for the speaker at this time? No. Thank you very much. Okay. Are there any hands raised on Zoom for public community or for verbal communications?
There are no hands raised.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Tonight, we will now move on to the consent calendar. And tonight, we have one item on the consent calendar, which is the draft minutes of the September 10, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Before the Planning Commission acts on the consent calendar, any member of the commission or public may request that this item be polled. And I believe there is a request to do that. So there is a request to do that, and then I think it's because there, I think, to correct something from the minutes. Okay. So if it gets polled, then what do we do?
It will go to the, it can either, it typically goes to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
But it's at the chair's discretion if you'd prefer to handle it now.
Is that okay with everyone if we quickly handle it now? Okay. Thank you. So then we don't have to vote on the consent calendar, and we will move it to now being before our official item number two for our public hearings. So we will start with the draft minutes of the September 10, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. And I will take public, we'll take public comment right now about that item. Thank you. Okay.
I would like a correction to Munchkin. I spoke on the, it doesn't mention anything about safety concerns during the, I said civil war and what was going on. And, you know, the assassination and I said Senator Duckworth and all that stuff. It's in the records. I just want, it's just seeking major safety concerns, Project 2025, civil war, you know, the earthquakes. What I noted was for the earthquakes is because we live next to Mexican-American, a lot southern things. There's a lot of, when things happen, we, the town should have some sort of, you know, plan, you know, how they, because, because right now, the California's mask and no mask, you know, California, nobody should be wearing a mask and the federal government says, well, we can wear a mask, and that's the big deal.
Okay. So, sorry, wow, that was very loud. Okay. So you are requesting that perhaps staff go back and review the recording to elaborate on the comments and clarify the comments, the verbal communications.
Seeking major concern about Project 2025 and a civil war that seems to be brewing. And want you as planners to look at that. Is that fair?
Perfect. Yes, I think so. Are there any questions for clarification for the speaker? Okay.
I did want to let the commission know that the town does action minutes, and so it's a summary of what occurred at the meeting. And the reason we do that is the full meeting is available on a video, and so it can be viewed verbatim on the video.
Okay. Thank you very much. I will now close the public portion of this item and ask that I do understand how, that it's not verbatim minutes. However, I do agree that this, this does not fully capture or summarize the public comment that we received. So is there a possibility to revise that? Or, I mean, what is the best route for that? Asking, making a motion to ask for that to be, it to be amended? Or no?
You can do that. I will say that, you know, many of the items that you spoke about, and even some of the ones we included in the minutes?
Yeah.
Are not under the purview of the Planning Commission.
Okay.
So I don't think there's an obligation to do that.
Okay.
Unless the town attorney feels otherwise.
The minutes don't necessarily need, I mean, they can just, if it's the chair's desire, they can reflect what was said, even though it's not in the purview of the Planning Commission to take any action on. So it's, it's up to the, it's the commission's discretion.
Okay. Well, I would like to invite some input from other commissioners. Commissioner Burnett?
Oh, thank you. Actually, when I read the minutes, I had the same thought that as a member of the public who's made the effort to come out here now twice to express his views and their deep personal convictions, I think that some additional language should be added to the minutes, presumably by staff for review at our next meeting.
Anyone else want to add anything? Commissioner Stumpf?
I would take a slightly different approach. I do think that the video record is the better record. Minutes are just really limited to brief statements and trying to capture action. And so I would be more in favor of adopting the minutes as written tonight. And again, just point out that the video record is the best record we have.
Does anyone else want to, does someone want to make a motion maybe? Or, I mean, I also support adjusting the minutes because I agree that when I read it, it didn't really reflect the statement that we received. And I think that even though it doesn't seem like it's within the purview, I think that it's still, that's the point of verbal communications at a public meeting. So I'm in support of that, but if we don't have a consensus or full support of that, I'm happy to take whatever motion is ready.
Yeah. So I'll follow up and move that the minutes be reserved for discussion at the next meeting of the Planning Commission. And at the interim, in the interim, the staff make efforts to more fully describe the concerns of, is it Munchkin or Mr. Munch? Kim Munchkin. Okay. Thank you very much for that. That's my motion.
Is there a second?
Yes. Chair, I'll second that motion with one additional change. I'm looking at the minutes now and it sends a reference to Project 2026. I believe it's supposed to be Project 2025, so with that additional change.
Yeah.
I would accept that. Clarification in motion?
Any discussion? Okay. I'll now call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed? So the motion passes four to two with Commissioners Stumpf and Sordi dissenting. Do we have that good for the record? Okay. We will now be moving on to item number two. Considering, consider making a recommendation to Town Council to introduce an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the Town, Council of the Town of Los Gatos, Replacing Town Code Section 29, Article 9, Flood Plane Management, Town Code Amendment Application A-25-004, exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061B3 because the ordinance makes changes to flood plane management land use regulations involving no physical activities at this time. Says townwide and we didn't have to visit anything, but are there any disclosures before the staff report? No. Okay. And I believe Director Burnham, you will be presenting the staff report this evening?
I will. Good evening, everyone. I'm Nicole Burnham, the Director of Parks and Public Works for the Town of Los Gatos. Tonight, as you noted, we're asking the commission to forward a recommendation to Town Council to update Town Code Section 29, Article 9, the flood plane ordinance. The town has participated in the National Flood Insurance Program since 1979. And the flood plane ordinance is what provides us the authority for staff to manage development in the flood plain in accordance with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program. Before this proposal, the most recent changes to the flood plane ordinance were made in March 3, 2003. The, since that time, there have been significant changes at national policy level to how flood planes are regulated and managed. And the State Department of Water Resources actually encouraged the town to update the ordinance to meet current standards. The proposed ordinance is a wholesale replacement of the current ordinance using template language that was provided by the Department of Water Resources. So this draft that is in front of you has been reviewed at the state level by the DWR and also at the local level by Valley Water, who is our primary support for flood plane management in Santa Clara County. And comments from both parties, both agencies were included, incorporated in the, in the proposed language. Specific changes include, aside from wholesale replacement, the definitions are updated, specific requirements for permitting structures within the mapped flood plain are also updated. The update acknowledges the California Building Code and the role that building code plays in supporting management of the flood plain, whereas historically, those have always been two very distinct pieces of code that we look to. Over time, we've started to actually get overlap in both of those, which actually helps building and it helps us from a flood plane management perspective. So if the commission elects to move forward with a recommendation to council tonight, then we'll prepare an item for the earliest available council meeting, either late October or early November. And before I turn it over to the town attorney to maybe talk about some of the legal issues, I did want to note that in the staff report, there's a sentence about the fact that participating in the National Flood Insurance Program as a town allows any resident to be able to get flood insurance. If we don't participate, then no one's eligible for flood insurance. So it is super important that we maintain our partnership with the NFIP and that we maintain current flood insurance, flood ordinance. Historically, flood insurance has only been required when a property is in the mapped flood plain, which has created problems nationally with the program, making the financial management of the program challenging. It's also become really clear in recent years that rainfall and storm patterns are incredibly unpredictable, and they don't always follow past patterns, which is what's used to predict flood plains. And so for this reason, the current recommendation and guidance really is for all properties to get flood insurance and have access to flood insurance just for their own preservation. But a question had come across today, so I just wanted to make that note. And with that, I can close my presentation and turn it to the town attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Before the commission starts its deliberation, I wanted to point out an error on page four of the ordinance. Under the definition of building code, there's a statement that starts with the subsection six that says, "Design flood means," and then it goes on to define the term "design flood." And so "design flood" should actually not be in that list of items. It should be a defined term on its own. And so there should be a new definition for "design flood" that has the information that appears after that. And that is something that would be corrected before this goes to the Town Council for introduction.
So as a, would you, do you want us to like include that in a recommendation? Or will that just automatically?
When, when the commission finishes its deliberation and decides to make a motion, perhaps the motion could be to recommend that the Town Council introduce the ordinance proposed with the changes described by the town attorney.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for staff at this time? Yes. Commissioner Burnett?
I have a couple of questions for Ms. Whalen. So I assume the government immunity applies should any act of the flood plane administrator lead to damage or personal injury? But could you speak to that and what would happen if somehow the government immunity was, was broken through? Pierce?
As I recall, the design immunity applies when there's a set of plans that was approved by a legislative body. And so I'd need to do further research to determine whether or not that design immunity would apply to a decision made by a staff member, and especially if it didn't involve any specific plans.
Okay. And can we move on to the hypothetical if there is no government immunity for actions by the flood plane administrator?
So could you give me an example of a type of a claim that the town might get?
I'm just wondering about insurance or mutual insurance among the, the insurance program that would be available to protect the town from liability under those circumstances? If there's no immunity.
So the town participates in an insurance joint powers authority, and we have coverage through that, but we have a self-insured retention of $50,000. And so any claim under $50,000 would be the town's responsibility if the town were at fault. There are claims adjusters who work for the town, and they will evaluate any claim to see if they have merit or not.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Yes. Commissioner Sordi?
Yeah, I guess just a question for the Public Works Director. So is my understanding correct that this doesn't affect the mapping in any way? Right now, this is purely ordinance and not the mapping of any properties, right?
That is correct.
Can I ask a quick follow-up on that? So the, the mapping and the establishment of the different flood zones within the town, is that mostly driven, I mean, if it were ever to change, is it mostly driven by private development, grading, changing of sites? Or is it sometimes driven or prompted by natural events or?
The mapping itself is developed and adopted by FEMA. And so, and with this ordinance change, we are adopting the most current FEMA mapping that's available. As development moves forward, if a developer were to do something in the flood plain that would change the flood plain, then yes, they could either do, and we would have to require through the land use process, either a letter of map change, which affects a specific single property, or a letter of map revision if there are multiple properties that are influenced by what happens with the development.
Thank you.
Okay. We will now open the public portion of the public hearing on item number two and invite comments from members of the public. There's no one in the chambers. Is there anyone on Zoom? And if so, is there a hand raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. But there's people watching us. Okay. We will close the public portion of the public hearing on item number two, and I invite commissioners to discuss and make a motion. Commissioner Stumpf?
I would be happy to move forward by making a motion. I move to recommend to the Town Council to introduce with revisions, as noted by the town attorney, an ordinance titled An Ordinance of the Town, Council of the Town of Los Gatos, Replacing Town Code Section 29, Article 9, Flood Plane Management, Town Code Amendment Application A-25-004, exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15061, Subsection B, Subsection 3, because the ordinance makes changes to flood plane management land use regulations involving no physical activities at this time. Project location, townwide, applicant, Town of Los Gatos. I can also make the required findings for SEQA and the required consistency with the town's general plan.
Thank you. And did, I guess, a second? Sorry. Can I get a second? Commissioner Burnett?
I second that.
And then, did that motion include the town attorney's? Okay. Great. Thank you. Sorry. I was reading. Thank you. Any discussion? Okay. I would just like to say that I think that there's no discussion because the staff report was very thorough and this is a, you know, recommended cleanup from the, and like to come into compliance. So appreciate that, that this was a relatively, hopefully, easy one for us tonight. I do just also want to point out that the subject, the title and the subject of tonight, in the staff report of tonight's meeting, there's like a typo. So it doesn't match the actual ordinance title. So just if you copy that over to the Town Council one, you want to correct that? Okay. Thank you. Yeah. Okay. So I will now call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. So we will now move on to our report from the Director of Community Development. Director Paulson, do you have any updates for us this evening?
Thank you, Chair. No updates this evening.
Cool. Thank you. In addition, then we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. So in addition to our service on the Planning Commission, members of the commission serve on several town committees. Are there any, is there, have, has CDAC met? No, I don't think so. Nothing, no one's met except HPC. Do you want me to give the update or do you want to? You can go ahead, Commissioner Burnett. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we did have a meeting today. We had three items. There was a preliminary review of a new construction for a pre-1940 review of a new construction for a pre-1941 home and we gave our recommendations. And then there was a review of new windows that were added and that was approved and recommended for approval. And then the third was also changes in some doors and lights in the doors, which was a recommended approval. And so, and then there was discussion to be brought. The Historic Preservation Committee will have a special meeting coming up to discuss, to be put on the agenda for some necessary changes and upgrades for our documents to go over that. And then the second one would be to consider making Glen Ridge a historic district. So that would be a special meeting for the Historic Preservation Committee because we consider it to be probably a couple of hours of discussion. So we couldn't do that this afternoon. And that's it.
Thank you. We will now move on to commission matters. Is there anyone that has any commission matters they would like to bring up this evening? Commissioner Burnett, thank you.
Yes, thank you again. Yeah, I would like to make a, make a motion to be put on the Planning Commission agenda for discussion of a code amendment to be considered by the Town Council regarding below-grade FAR square footage for basements. So I don't know if you need more detail why I would recommend that or why I'm requesting that, but I'm just putting that forward.
So I think that maybe before we form a, well, I guess this wasn't the motion, but we, I got, so I'll get a second. Is there a second? Sorry. Anyone?
Can we get a little more detail out of the background?
Yeah, okay, so maybe, can you, are you willing to pull your motion for now so that we can just like explain why?
Okay, the reasons behind it?
I think that just, well, I'll second the motion so that we can continue. All, and then I'm just going to ask, okay, Mr. Mullen, can you explain how, oh, sorry, maybe not. No, I was just going to ask if you could explain the process, or I can. So essentially, if we want to add something to the agenda, you know, this is when it is brought up to, we can't discuss tonight, it needs to be publicly noticed, as we all know. And this is a, you know, Commissioner Burnett was expressing an interest in just getting some information and looking into how the current below-grade square footage exemption is impacting FAR and how that's exempt from FAR and what that is on, impacting on town. So what would happen is we would add this as a item to a future agenda where we would then discuss some information about that and then make a motion and if we have consensus, request that Town Council directs us or Policy Committee or something to make a change or not, you know? So that's really the pathway that this would go. In addition, you know, staff will look at when it would be appropriate for this to go onto the agenda, as in like not, you know, we have some hefty meetings coming up. But also, I talked to Mr. Mullen yesterday about making sure that we are know in advance so that we can submit questions to staff in advance so that we, you know, can have a discussion in one place with all the information that we need. So that's kind of the background for that. So, questions, comments, yes?
I was just, is it possible to get just a quotation of what the code section is that we are zooming in on, just so we can start to get prepared?
Mr. Mullen?
Yes, thank you. So I can, I can paraphrase it since I don't have the code in front of me, but the, the code related to below-grade square footage evolved out of what used to be called the cellar policy. There's a preamble to that code that says below-grade square footage is to be used in lieu of visible mass. And then there's qualifiers for when below-grade square footage is exempt from the floor area ratio. There's, there's three or four qualifiers. But typically, if it's buried square footage by, and doesn't daylight more than four feet, then it's exempt from the floor area ratio.
Okay, yeah, I understand that concept. I was just wondering what section of the code we're looking at. But maybe that's no big deal.
No, we can look at it. I can, we can find it quickly. It's not, I don't think it will be that difficult to, to lock down so that we can, yeah, be prepared. So right now, all we need to do is decide if there's consensus about adding this to the agenda just for a discussion. It could be five minutes or however long we want it, so.
Through the chair, I can offer that code section. It's section 29, I had it,
Okay. Commissioner Stump?
Just a clarification, would this be a discussion for this across the entire town or is it for certain areas within the town? Is this an all-encompassing conversation about below-grade?
It would.
So I think, yeah, sorry. That would be part of the conversation that would be had, right? I think what the first step is, does the Planning Commission, through Commission Matters, want to place this on an agenda for a future discussion? Then you're going to have a future discussion. We'll talk about all kinds of things, may not get through all of it in one meeting, may need to come back with additional information. And then the commission's going to make a motion to decide whether or not they want to forward a recommendation that, as Mr. Mullen mentioned before, to have direct staff to, you know, allocate resources to that effort. And there's a number of things that probably come up with this topic, having spoken with Commissioner Burnett. And it's really kind of how the box of above-grade square footage is getting this bonus square footage and not meeting the potential intent as in the code, right? So you've got the box, we've got FAR, we've got setbacks, we've got height, and we've got lot coverage, right? That kind of sets the maximum box. So if someone's using the maximum box, then, you know, should we look at some other, whether it's counting all of it, counting some of it? I think those are all the conversations that Planning Commission will have moving forward as you go through that discussion.
Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Burnett?
Yeah, I just wanted to add on. I think what came up for me is with the ADUs. Now, we, we don't consider the ADUs, we do not count the ADUs. So the intention originally, I think it was in 2017 when they changed this ordinance to sort of give a free, you know, ability to have more square footage and not to be counted in the FAR to help with having larger homes. And that was good, fine and good. And now what, it seems to be happening with not having to count an ADU, it almost becomes part of the house. And so now you get another free pass at not counting FAR. And, you know, when you consider our housing element and we're trying to have affordable homes, I think sometimes this, to me, I was just thinking, gosh, this definitely adds to larger homes, which I think if, if it had to be counted, we'd have maybe a more of a supply of smaller homes for younger families. And I think that's the intention of our housing element and, you know, affordable housing and whatever. So it was just a thought of mine that I think it, it could be relooked at and especially like in historic neighborhoods or whatever. So I think it's something that would be good to be looked at again.
Yes, Commissioner Burnett?
If the motion is approved, would staff have sufficient information to provide a staff report?
We will provide a staff report, but we're not going to be digging up a whole bunch of information because the next step is, you're going to have that conversation. If the majority of you don't want to move a recommendation forward, then we're not going to go through that whole effort. So following that step, then we would, you know, move forward.
That makes a lot of sense. Thanks.
And I've had some conversations with staff, you know, during prep, during our prep meeting and everything yesterday about some of the, some of the details that I feel like it would be helpful for us to, you know, have on the day of the discussion to direct that. So, okay. So there is a motion. Do we have any more questions? Okay, so there is a motion and is that clear? Did we get the motion down?
Yes.
Okay, so I will call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand. And those opposed? It passes. Sorry, Jeff, we're going to make you talk about it anyway. Passes five to one with Commissioner Burnett dissenting. So with that being said, are there any other commission matters? Nope. Okay. Thank you to all staff and everyone that came to join us tonight. And note being no further business of the commission, this meeting is adjourned.